Board of Education meeting for June 17th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:03. Aaron, if you could put up the flag on screen for everyone. Thank you. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I will take a roll call now, please.
Mrs. Giller?
Here.
Mr. Pascal?
Here.
Mrs. Anally?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Dionne? She'll be there later. Mrs. Carey?
Here.
And Mr. Nolan?
Here. And I will turn this over to Dr. Spring.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome our Board of Education members and all of our participants tonight. So thank you for spending a little bit of your evening with us. We appreciate that. So, Aaron, we can get started with our first slide, our pictures from our elementary moving up ceremonies. So you can see that. That's really exciting. It was a great day. That was last Friday. I attended Harmony Hills and Abram Lansing's and Van Skye's, and they were all drive-up ceremonies. All of the teachers were there, and they did a really great job of making all of our students and their families feel really special. So shout out to all three of our elementary schools. Thank you. I don't know if you had a chance to view the science research or the senior or the student scholars, the Cahoe Student Scholars. So that also is available to be viewed on our website. And again, the students did a great job with science research, and the Student Scholars program is very impressive. Congratulations to all of our award winners. So thank you very much. And now we're ready for questions, please. We're still taking comments, and we will answer your questions. So please feel free to email them to us this evening. Thank you. And first of all, a huge shout out and a big thank you to all of our voters. So you can see there that our budget passed by over 70% of all of our voters here who participated. So we thank you. And I think that while we had almost four times the number of voters who participated because of the ballot process this year, I think that what it shows is that our community really does support us. Our community supports education. Our community supports our teachers, and they're grateful, and we're grateful as well. So thank you for that. And we congratulate Mrs. Giller on a huge landslide there. And we also welcome to Mr. Peter Anally. So welcome aboard, and he will be with us at our next board meeting, which is July 1st. Next slide, please. So while we welcome Mr. Peter Anally, we are saying goodbye to Helen Anally. So here you can see, we have a plaque. And Helen, we will be dropping it off to you, special delivery. And we thank you for your three years of dedication and service to our students and to our school community. We're very grateful. We wish you well, and we'll miss you.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
So happy retirement. So it is a tradition. At our last board meeting of the school year, we do like to recognize our retirees throughout this school year, the 1920 school year. So let's get started. So first, we have Brian Wood, Principal of Cahoe's High School. So each tribute that I'm going to be reading on each retiree was written by an administrator, their direct supervisor. So this was written by Laura Tarlo. So Brian Wood has served as an assistant principal, co-principal, and finally, the high school principal for the past four years. And he has had the vision and work ethic to bring the high school to a new level of excellence. Throughout his time as principal, Brian has remained optimistic and open-minded when it came to ways to improve our school community. He helped to create several new alternative learning programs for our at-risk students, and also made it a priority to re-establish a parent-teacher organization. He allowed students to have a voice by creating a student ambassador group, and always was open to new ideas that students and staff brought his way. Brian was great at being transparent and upfront with the school community and made sure to keep great communication between all parties. The high school is a better place because of Brian Wood and all of the energy he devoted to his principalship. Brian, you will be missed. We wish you all the best. Katia Katz, English as a New Language Teacher, and this tribute was written by her principal, well, actually, one of her principals, but Jacqueline DeChiro, who was the coordinator for our E&amp;L program. Katia is one of the most wonderful people to teach in Cahoe's. I remember one of my first encounters with her. I was still teaching 4th grade at the time. She opened my eyes to my own misunderstanding, which has made me a better teacher, principal, and coordinator of the E&amp;L program here in Cahoe's. Katia brought her own experience as an immigrant to this country, along with her own daughters, having to learn to speak English with her each day while she worked with our E&amp;L population. This gave her the ability to understand that she needed to do more than just teach her students the current grade-level curriculum. For many, it meant filling in the gaps, which Katia always tried to do. She went above and beyond for her students, spending many hours after her workday visiting homes and making phone calls. For one family, she enlisted the help of her own daughter and accompanied the family to court to ensure the family understood what was happening. Katia opened my eyes to the immigrant population and their struggles when coming to a new country. Katia knew the meaning of the quote, "The limits of my language are the limits of my world." She would do everything possible so that her students would know no limits for their future. Katia is a true role model for every teacher. I will miss you, my friend. Thank you, Jacqueline and Katia. We wish you all the best and will miss you. Next slide. Lori Marola, speech teacher, and this is a tribute from her principal, Mr. Dan Martinelli. In Ms. Marola's exemplary career at the Cahoe City School District, she has helped countless children. Ms. Marola is very kind, a strong child advocate, and has served as a mentor to her peers. We will miss her positive attitude and the affirmations she delivers to everyone. We will miss her expertise as a fellow colleague. And Mr. Martinelli writes here, "Please still bring him soup." All right, next slide. Kay Weiss, and also written by Jacqueline DeChiro, one of her principals. Kay has taught music band and chorus in our district for 30 years. While writing these words about Kay, our country is seeing much unrest. I found a quote that I think fits why music is so important to our students. Music is a place to take refuge. It is a sanctuary for mediocrity and boredom. It's innocent, and it's a place you can lose yourself in thought, memories, and intricacies. Kay Weiss has provided hundreds of children in Cahoe's with the incredible gift of music. I had the pleasure of observing Kay, and each time I walked away thinking of the Chinese proverb, "Tell me, and I forget; show me, and I remember; involve me, and I understand." Kay always played along, demonstrating for the students, joining in with their playing as they learned. While we knew her heart was really at the secondary level, Kay took pride in working with the elementary students, understanding how she could influence the program if she got to the students early and trained them. Congratulations, Kay. We will miss you. Betty Jakes, from Brian Nolan, Director of Food Service. Betty worked almost 30 years for the Cahoe City School District in the Food Service Department. Betty started out as the assistant cook and moved up to the head cook position 20 years ago. I have worked with Betty for the last 12 years. She was a great asset to me, and she almost never missed a day. She helped out when we were shorthanded and was able to rally the staff to create a can-do attitude in the kitchen. Betty communicated each day with each lead worker in all buildings to ensure that all buildings knew of any changes or other important information. She was a true leader and will be sorely missed. I congratulate her on her retirement, and I know she is looking forward to spending time with her grandchildren. Thank you, Betty, for all of your years of service and support to help make the Food Service Department a true success. Thank you, Betty, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. And her husband, Michael Nolan. Jim Stapleton, Director of Facilities, wrote this for Mike. Mike made the transition for the first time as director, or for me, as the Director of Facilities, very easy. His knowledge of our field and our maintenance department will be greatly missed. I am grateful for the experiences that he shared with me. His hard work and dedication made an undeniable difference to the Cahoe City School District. Thank you, Mike. Nancy La Forest, a tribute written by her principal, Jacqueline DeChiro. Nancy La Forest and I have several things in common. We both love clothes, shoes, and most importantly, the students at Van Skye Grade School. Nancy has worked in our Functional Skills Classroom for many years now. She has given her students patience, understanding, and care each day she came to school. Nancy was so proud of her students and their accomplishments, no matter how small they may seem to us, they were big steps for her students. Nancy knew that and celebrated each success. Each day, I would eagerly wait to see Nancy arrive at school and see what outfit she would wear, and she knew I would want to see any new shoe she bought. The students at Van Skye will miss Mrs. La Forest, and so will the staff, whose day she brightened each day. Congratulations, Nancy. Best of luck. Anna Marsette, written by her principal, Dan Martinelli, Cahoe's Middle School. Mrs. Marsette is a part of the fabric of Cahoe's Middle School. She knows the kids. She knows the staff. She knows the community. She is known as our taskmaster. If you ask Jan for help, you are going to get it. She has worked in every office, and her capabilities are endless. Thank you so much, Jan, for your years of service. You will be truly missed. Congratulations, Janice. Linda Nedu Scrupa, a tribute written by her principal, Brian Wood, at Cahoe's High School. We recognize Linda Scrupa for her over 20 years of service to the Cahoe City School District. Linda serves as the high school's receptionist. Many of her responsibilities included being the first to greet guests as they came to the high school. Linda was also responsible for managing student sign-in and sign-out. She also served as the main contact person with respect to our VOTAC or CTE students and would relay important information to them when they signed in with her every morning. Finally, Linda served for many years on the high school's building leadership team, contributing to improving the climate and culture of the school. We wish Linda the best in her retirement, and we will miss her very much. Congratulations, Linda. And lastly, Helen Tarlo, Main Office Aid, Cahoe's High School, with a tribute from her principal, Mr. Wood. We recognize Helen Tarlo for her over 20 years of service to the Cahoe City School District. Helen served as an aide at the high school and was primarily responsible for overseeing student attendance. In her daily routine, she always went above and beyond. Each day, she would place the calls home to parents, collect absenteeism notes, and enter information into the school's student management system. In addition, she faithfully stood at the bottom of the main staircase each morning and would be the first to greet our students as they headed off to class. We wish Helen the best in her retirement and want her to know that she will be greatly missed. Congratulations, Helen. So we congratulate all of our retirees, and we wish them much health, happiness, and prosperity, and may they finally have a chance to really pursue other interests and passions that they have so that they can really live life to its fullest. So congratulations and best of luck. Okay, so we'll get to some of our slides. So we have a new executive order, hot off the press today. The governor declared Juneteenth a state holiday this year for New York State employees, and he is looking to push the legislation so that it is a statewide holiday for the next school year, so 2021. So we will start planning for that. In-person extended school year is allowable. We did announce that last time, and I'd like to give you an update on our program. So we are going to have a blended program. The first thing we did was canvass our families, and the response was overwhelmingly in support of coming back to school in some in-person form or fashion. So we are very confident that our students are excited to come back, and we're excited to have them. So this will be a blended modeled program. Monday and Friday will be virtual days for all students. There are some families who have decided to keep their students virtual. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday will be an in-class for all of our in-class students, but then all of our virtual students will be joining in a virtual model so that they will still be able to see their peers and participate in activity. So we feel that, you know, we're excited about this model. And we have about 50 students. We'll be in two buildings. We have four classes at Van Skye, and we'll have two classes at the high school. And one of those classes at the high school will be the middle school, one of the middle school programs. Because remember, finally, the new roof at the middle school this summer. So we're excited about that. So we're excited for the extended school year. Obviously, we have a lot of details to work out to ensure health and safety and to abide by the CDC guidelines and rules, and that's something that we are working on. As you recall, APPR has been suspended for the school year. There is updated graduation guidance from the New York State Department of Health, and we are working to make sure we're following this guidance. As you know, our graduation is now July 18th. So some of the new guidance includes tents, and yes, that is something we are looking into, and whether or not we're going to allow parents to take photographs, again, wearing masks, making sure we communicate what the expectations are, having markers and demarcation so that people know what the six-foot distance marker looks like, the length of the ceremony. So this is something that they're really strongly encouraging that all schools who are going to be using this method limit the length of the ceremonies. So that's something that we are working on, and we will most likely have three ceremonies on July 18th. And we definitely would like our Board of Education there conferring the diplomas, and we'll set a schedule so we can get that ready. And then we are also having a small ceremony, June 27, for those graduates who aren't able to make it, July 18. And we would also love to have a board member or two to be available for that. So I'll send out an email, and so we can get that all set. Next slide, please. Summer guidance for athletics. So there was some guidance that came out. There is a task force, the New York State High School Athletic Association, and it's all based on the National Federation for High School Athletics. And if we make it to Phase Four at the beginning of July, which I believe we're on target to do that, then we will be able to open up training for our athletes. So that would be small groups of athletes who would come. We would have to have wellness screening for them, and they would have to wear masks, and we would try to have the training outside. So stay tuned, but this is something that Jeff is already working on. We're already planning for this and really excited to have our athletes back on campus. Plan to reopen school tomorrow is our district-wide committee is meeting. And so this is a big task, and I think I spent the first couple weeks preparing and kind of wishing that this would somehow go away or complaining about it. But so I have now moved to the next phase, and the next phase is to develop a checklist, to have, you know, deliverables so that each subcommittee will have their tasks of what they need to complete so that we can, you know, start the plan, start the action, and stop complaining, because this is how it is. So I'm happy about that. I'm still working on it. But I did share the document with everybody, and I did embed the new template, the worksheet for each committee to work on. So you can take a look at that. We will be updating our school community after the meeting so everybody knows what our plan is. Everyone will know what we're working on. And we want everybody to have confidence that this is something we're taking very seriously so that we can ensure the safety and the health of all of our students and all of our staff. Next slide.
Good evening. This is Peggy O'Shea. I just wanted to give you an update on our Chromebook collection. So the elementary buildings have started collecting the Chromebooks, and Abram Lansing and Harmony Hill have about three-quarters of their Chromebooks back to date, and they're continuing to reach out. Van Skye has all but a few back, and we're moving into middle and high school collection this week and next. So that's moving favorable. I wanted to, in a little while, you're going to be approving the first reading of our policy, which in terms of data privacy and data protection, and I'm the district data protection officer. So I just wanted to give you just a quick update of ED Law 2D. The timeline to approve this has been moved back to October, but since we've already done the work of the working on the policy and starting to inform staff, we wanted to move ahead. We're working on training, which is a requirement for all staff in the upcoming school year. One of the big items is in terms of instructional software, because any software we're used, that we use, even if it is free, we must have their data privacy policy posted on our available for parents. So we are working on the final touches of a contract and criteria for them to let us know how they plan on storing our personally identifiable information of students or staff, destroying it when no longer in use, et cetera. So one difficult thing is it's every software, even free software. So if a teacher clicks on "I agree," that's now entering into a contract. So we had a lot of discussions on that in our staff development. And at each grade level and content area level, we asked them to submit, and I'm compiling a list of all the software that's used throughout. And then our next task will be then to look at these platforms and ensure that they're ED Law 2D compliant and go from there. Also, ClassLink. ClassLink, we're rolling it out at the elementary buildings first and then at the secondary level, but it allows for a single sign-on of district-approved technology resources. So right now, if I'm a third-grade student, I sign into my Chromebook with my username and password, my host username and password, and I can use that for the reading platform or potentially the math platform, go math. But if I do Reflex Math, I have to use another username and password. If I do RAS Kids, I have to do another username and password. So this will allow one username and password throughout all of our platforms. It will also allow students to just be able to click on the icon on their Chromebook to access that. It'll also enable rostering to be much easier, because right now, for every system we use, someone has to go in and import the student names, et cetera. So this will automatically import into all of our systems through school tools. This will definitely help in terms of not only efficiency of use, but also in our students being comfortable with using the different platforms. And it can be used at and our K2 students will also be able to use a QR code versus typing in a username and password if their teacher wishes to do. And so especially in the early, early grades, that will be much easier. And then finally, preparation for 2021. We talked about this, the 2020-2021 school year, and all of the staff developments as well to make sure that at the very first weeks of school, we have our Google classrooms and Schoology up and running, that we have taught our students not only how to use it, but how to submit assignments, because Schoology was widely used, but we did find that some of our students had not submitted assignments that way. So make sure this is upfront training. And then also Jensen Giacomo and I will be working on a parent academy for training for parents right at the start of the school year, too, in using these platforms. Any questions on technology?
I don't have too much of a question, per se, just in regards to ED Law 2D. It's a difficult situation. We've talked about this before. It's really important to have the flexibility for staff to install software, especially free software, and help them and their students. But it's also, we know this isn't a problem. It's just going to go away. There are a lot of examples in our society of data that's been misused or misappropriated. And obviously, we need to do everything we can within reason to protect the data of our students. So I'm happy that we're making the progress that we are, but also trying to make sure the flexibility is there for our staff.
Yes, yes, I agree. Okay, Aaron, next. So I also wanted to provide a quick update on our end-of-year staff discussion. So on the 15th and 16th, at the elementary level, there were grade-level meetings. There were meetings between sending and receiving teachers, i.e., first-grade teachers met with kindergarten teachers and also second-grade teachers at a building and individual level. There were also, at the secondary level, content area, department discussions, team meetings, and then all culminating in staff meetings with common discussions, common discussion threads throughout. I have notes from all of the district in the process of compiling these notes. So in terms of curriculum, really, how do we ensure that we keep our focus on the priority standards? Even more important now than ever to also ensure vertical alignment on the priority standards, make sure teachers are following common curriculum maps. In terms of assessment, so we know students have been virtually learning since March, and now we have summer, but how can we assess the gaps and remediate learning needs instead of testing entire set of skills in the beginning, building informative assessments prior to each unit of study, and then either remediate or enrich accordingly? So for example, instead of testing fractions at the beginning of the year with a whole host of other math concepts, when we get to the fraction unit, that's when we assess the student's knowledge on fractions and come up with differentiated plans to meet those student needs, which tie into the next phase, which is instruction. And then finally, social-emotional. Knowing that in the beginning part of when we first come back, and this will be very, very important right up front, how do we meet the social-emotional needs of our students as they return to school? In our classrooms and our
And our classrooms and our buildings are doing welcome-back planning, trauma-responsive welcome-back planning. We also have social workers meeting. They met as a group. A lot of good feedback in terms of how, how they can assist, how they can push into classrooms and have discussions. So this is the framework, and now we have quite a bit of staff input, and we'll be continuing to look at these areas through our reopening committee. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Erin, next slide. Thank you. So New York State budget under COVID-19. So again, the magnitude of the financial impact is starting to be, come realized in our state. So I just wanted to keep this at the forefront and to share some of this information with you. So local sales tax collections dropped over 32% in May. April, New York State tax receipts, again, over $8 billion less than anticipated. And unemployment for the month of April was measured at 14.5% in our state. The second measurement period is concluding June 30th. So we want to definitely keep our eye on that one. And I, there is no update to report on the HEROES Act and the Federal Stimulus PAC, which worries me because now that many states are reopening and jobs are becoming more, you know, more jobs are there. Just a little worried about a federal stimulus pack for, for New York State and for, for, for the other states, but obviously especially New York State. So Stacy and I are continuing to work on a contingency plan in the case that there is a takeback. Again, we're hoping that, that it doesn't happen, but these numbers don't look very promising. Stacy?
Yeah, good evening. This is Stacy Mackey. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our district clerk and our election inspectors for all of their services. The COVID environment has been a challenge, and the budget vote was, was no exception. So we did have a high-volume turnout, and our district clerk did lead the team, and it was a quick and efficient accounting process. So I'm very grateful to the team for all of their work. A quick purchasing update we do have on tonight's agenda, the Harmony Hill Boiler. We did have four vendors that did submit a bid. TMI is on the agenda to be awarded this evening. It did come in under budget, which we're grateful for. Just an update on our PPE purchase. We did participate in a group purchase through BOSI's. We do expect to have those items delivered within the next few weeks. We did also have the results for the copy paper, general supplies and custodial supplies. Copy paper has been tallied. The WB Mason Company is the lowest responsible bidder. That'll be on the July 1st agenda. We're still working on tallying the results for general supplies and custodial supplies, but the results will be awarded on the July 1st agenda for those items as well. Any questions? Thank you.
We wanted to wish everyone a great summer. It's finally here. I like the tiger with the sunglasses. And again, any questions, please submit your comment and email it to boe@cohos.org. Thank you.
At this point, I'll open it up to board comments for anything related to the agenda. I had a couple. Just congratulations again, everyone, on the budget. Margaret, Pete, on their successful campaigns and elections. And part of, I think, what our success with the budget was a couple of different factors. I think, obviously, the absentee ballots had a positive impact on turnout, which I think is wonderful. And in addition, I think that we've had over 100 people at most of our board meetings here digitally. So I think we're, the platform that we chose, the different routes that we've gone around things here in this pandemic and have been challenging, but I think they've also been very successful in a lot of ways to engage with our community. And so I'm very happy about that. I hope that we can continue to get that kind of turnout in the future for both the vote and for our meetings when they are dealing with important topics. And then also, I think another part, when we think about the vote that we received, it kind of showcases, there were a lot of deliberations on behalf of the board and our staff, difficult conversations regarding the budget. But the support that we received, I think, helps affirm that our, this board and the district are pretty step-in-step. We're, we work well together, and we're well representative of our community. So I'm very happy about that. And again, thank you, Helen, for your time on the board. I can't say enough about your, you know, compassion for our students and how much you care about them. And I've definitely learned from you as your time on the board, so thank you. And thank you to all the retirees that were listed as well. There's so many folks that have spent so much time with our students, making them their lives better. So thank you as well. One other related thing we talked about, plans for next year, Dr. Spring. I know that those are very challenging, and we need to be prepared for anywhere from full-on back to school to some sort of blended, to completely virtual. I think completely virtual might be, you know, not, you know, where we'll go initially, but it also, the pendulum can swing anywhere in the year, back in the other direction. So it's extremely challenging, and thank you to everyone on the committee who's working towards the goals. We have to plan for, you know, Plans A through Z in these cases, and it's incredibly challenging. So thank you for everyone taking that on. With that, if there are no other comments from board members, I can jump to a couple of community comments. There was a comment from community member Bill Smith congratulating the district on our successful passing of the budget and the board in the district as well. So thank you, Bill, for that. I have a note from Deanna Kelly. It says, "On behalf of the Cohoes Principals Association, I'd like to thank Helen Anally for her service as a Board of Education member." Thank you, Helen. We will miss you. And thank you, Deanna, for that note. And then also a note from Scott Shalone, which reads, "On behalf of the members of the Cohoes Teachers Association, we would like to congratulate all of the retirees and wish all of them the best in their future endeavors. Thank you for all that you have done for the students and staff of Cohoes. We will miss you all and to enjoy your retirement." And again, I can echo both of those comments. I believe both to be extremely valid. And that wraps up our community questions. If we can now I'll need a motion for our consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Every time, right? Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mrs. Anally?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. With that, are there any comments from board members on any topic at all unrelated to the agenda?
I just wanted, this is Helen. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. I'm very confident with the board that the six members that I'm leaving behind, this new guy that's coming on, he seems all right, so. I really, I really, I shared the last three years with some amazing people, and I've met some amazing people and really kind of connected with my city through this board. And I'm so appreciative that I got the opportunity to do it and hopefully have made some lifelong friends as well. And I'm really just so proud of everything that they do for our district and for our city, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Helen. We all appreciate your, your efforts here, and I think you have made some lifelong friends, so.
Thank you, Helen.
With that, then our next meeting will be July 1st at 6:00, which our reorganization meeting. And aside from that, I'll need a motion to enter into executive session at 6:43 to discuss the annual evaluation of the superintendent.
I will make one last motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mrs. Anally?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. That concludes our public session for this evening. We don't anticipate that we'll return. For board members, you all have five or 10 minutes, and we'll at least try to be on five before seven so that we can enter into our executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Bye, Helen.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.